Technology access and then what we're doing to help with the social emotional needs of our students. So I'll go through that in a little bit more detail. Last week, the state opened up that request again and added several more details. Overall, our teachers and our administrators were well ahead of the game, both with initiating it and in access really of what the requirements were for the state, which has sort of been our go-to. We're not interested in meeting the minimum requirements. It's always what can we do for the best of our students? And I believe we made that transition exceptionally well. So when we talk about the learning materials and the types of content, we have paper textbooks that are out there. We know that on Tuesdays, we have instructional materials that are delivered home, both in digital format and paper. So when I say digital format, they're coming out and coming back to us on USB drives if the individuals don't have access to the internet. We have been using pretty close to every tool that we have for communication, including telephones, email, video conferencing, social media, our website. And then we've also been using our learning management system, which is through Power School called Class Pages. Um, let's see. In addition to that, we have been meeting the needs of our special education students with the consultation work of our special education teachers. And the process of identifying and reviewing CSE, IEP, or IEPs through the CSE and 504 process has been ongoing, and that did not stop at all. And all of those meetings have been going on as normal, with the exception that they're now done primarily through video conference or phone conference. As far as instruction goes, we have been continuing synchronous or asynchronous, meaning we have recorded classes that have gone out, which is asynchronous, meaning not in actual real time, or synchronous, meaning the teacher has actually been teaching to students in a one-to-one or one-to-group setting in a live format. That has been done primarily through Zoom, but also through a couple other tools. When it comes to technology access, we know that all of our students in grades four through 12 have district-provided devices. If they have cellular phone coverage at their home, we have distributed wireless internet devices to them. So in other words, MiFi or hotspots. So that really, we had 100 of those total that we have purchased for this primary purpose. And that has really helped to break up the digital divide that we had between students who did have internet and students who didn't. Of course, that doesn't rectify all of our students' needs for the internet. So we have a variety of other pieces that we're doing, including the USBs going back and forth, paper copies going back and forth, so that we can keep them engaged in the process. As well as social emotional needs, we know that our counselors, social workers, psychologists, as well as support, our family support workers have all been heavily engaged with the students. When a student drops off, so to speak, or we don't have communication with them for several days, one of those individuals will reach out to them personally. If in fact, they don't get in touch with them, we will make a home visit, and we do that with the assistance of our school resource officers. So we feel as though we've not only been ahead of the game, but have actually done exceptionally well in the process of providing a continuity of instruction. Our goal is really to do the very best that we can for our students and respond to their needs. So at any point in time, when a teacher finds a student who needs something, no matter what that could be, from food to instructional materials to social or emotional support, we have a system in place whereby we can get that for our students.
Anybody have any questions for Mark?
Nope.
Karen?
All right. Um, Bob asked me to speak a little bit on food deliveries that we've had. So we started in March, March 18th to the 31st. We delivered a little over 7,000 meals. In the month of April, we delivered just under 15,000. And that's Monday through Thursday for delivery for Monday or for lunch and breakfast. And then just last Friday, or two Fridays ago, actually, we started the Friday backpack thing where students were, could pick up or were delivered meals that would cover the weekend. So four meals for the weekend. Two Fridays ago, there were 354 bags picked up. So that's 1,416 meals. And then this Friday, dropped actually a little bit down to 271. So, um, you know, that's a little bit less. That's a little over 1,000 meals for the weekend. But the two Fridays alone, it's 2,500 meals for the community. So we'll continue to do that. Again, it's Monday through Thursday, our both breakfast and lunch delivered. And then on Fridays, the delivery is meals for the weekends. And the weekend meals are provided by Food Bank of Western New York, free to the district and free to the students. And that's all I have on food delivery.
Dr. Gill, do you have anything else?
Um, well, I think everybody's going to acknowledge and share appreciation for our teachers. So let me start off and take everybody's opportunity to do that stuff. Well, the administrative team, initially, I'm going to extend that to our administrative team as well. Today is Teacher Appreciation Day, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. We'd like to think that it's at least the Teacher Appreciation Month. And no more of a time is it, or no time is it more important than it is right now when we see the teachers going the extra mile to provide instruction in relatively challenging circumstances. So once again, I just wanted to acknowledge our teachers, our staff across the board, from our building grounds and support staff to all of our school-related personnel and our bus drivers, everyone is really pulled together and just makes Salamanca a point of pride, not just for the community, but for each person. I think each person can be proud to say that they work here or have students to go here because we really have a cell, and we could not do that without the people. This is just a building, but with people, it becomes a school and a family. And we should all take pride in working with everyone.
Karen, do you have anything else to add?
Oh, just said it was fun going out and driving all over God's country to deliver signs today. It was kind of cool.
All right, our board message, Sue, you want to start?
I can't be more proud of the teachers. Meredith is a teacher, I'm proud of that very much so. And I really appreciate the administration and the teachers and how they are working with these things through the extra mile with the bus, with the IT department. I went down and saw that, and I'm very proud of our school.
I guess that, and I delighted this afternoon when Karen was putting the sign in my front because I was a real person for the first time in my life. I'm right out. There was a lot of positive feedback on Facebook, everybody. Have a sunny day to move up. I agree with everything that's been said, just to make it funny.
Yeah?
Yeah, likewise, um, yeah. Thank you to everybody. Yeah, that everybody makes.
Carrie?
Yeah, I just got a message that the sound is horrible. Hope that's what you were doing, Rob?
Yeah. Can everybody hear us better? Come up, yes, no?
No, okay.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Meg's getting a thumbs down.
It's, um, it's really garbled. I think incredibly garbled.
Oh, now, Meg.
I mean, I can hear you, but it's just, there's a lot of static in the background.
Back to just the microphones on the computer and unmute.
How's that, Meg? Is that better?
That's way better.
All right. Let the record reflect, Bob solved the technology problem.
Yeah, that's a lot clearer.
Okay.
So, yeah, I wanted to say thank you to all of our staff, our teachers. I wanted to shoot this picture that, uh, for long. Yeah, I mean, that was something nice to do. Really means a lot, and we appreciate it. Um, and again, thank you to all of our teachers, our staff, our administrators. You know, this year has kind of been short for us. Everyone's still doing what they can, you know, and it's the same thing. I said it before, and I'll say it again, education is still important. We still want our kids to try their hardest. We're not giving up, you know, we want to, Bob's talking to you as well. We really think that this school year isn't over. We want to give special education. We want our kids to really try, you know, regardless of whether reading's failed or whatever, you know, we're encouraging kids to continue. Thank you to our staff for struggling and trying every day to help the education. Another thing I wanted to bring, tomorrow starts Nurses Week, Nurses Week Appreciation. We have several nurses who are in our district. I want to thank you to those people as well. That's, that's, you guys do, it's so important. I mean, right now, it's probably not seen, but personally, I have seen where nurses do first hand. You know, they've helped our family a lot, and they help everybody else. So I do want to say, starting tomorrow, Nurses Week Appreciation, we appreciate you too. Thank you for everything you do. Um, that's kind of all I have. Brett, am I able to unmute your mic?
Okay.
Thank you. Should I talk on mine or yours? Let me get my volume then. If I can find it. Okay, I also want to say thank you to everybody. Everybody is just going above and beyond all the time. It's like you said, Karen, not just the teachers, the administrators, the bus drivers, the nurses, the cleaners, everybody in the school is really above and beyond for the kids. And I think the kids are very appreciative of it, too. You know, you see the banners around town. When I drove home from work today and I saw the sign in my yard, it made me smile. I was like, oh, it was thought of. My kid said, well, what did you get one for you? You're not a teacher. I am on the board, but thank you. But the same thing, my kids are trying to keep up with Zoom, and it's tough. It's really, really tough for them. It's a new way of learning, but they're still keeping up with it, and they're still following through. I also want to say thank you to whoever thought of the Adopt a Senior program because two people have adopted my daughter, and it really just brought a smile to her face. She's received two different gifts from two different adoptive parents, and it's really nice and thoughtful and an out-of-the-box thinking. And whoever came up with it, I just want to say thank you because it really does mean a lot, not only from the kids, but, you know, for the parents, too, to be able to see that people haven't forgotten your child who's a senior and have lost so much. They also, I know, um, we had a visit, too, today from, I think it was Chad Bartosik, stopped by and interviewed the different athletes that are the senior athletes, and is going to put together something for them because they're losing out on their senior sport. So again, it's all those little things that, yeah, our kids have lost out on a lot, but man, they're getting things that other kids really haven't before. So it's really nice to see how the community, the district, everybody stepped up to really honor them. And again, thank you to all the teachers and to all the different staff. We really do appreciate you. Meg, do you have anything that you want to say, too?
Sure, just really quick, just echoing, you know, what everyone else has said. Thank you to the teachers and administrators. Also, I couldn't quite catch everything Carrie said, but I did hear nurses. And I would be remiss because my mom's a nurse to say, to acknowledge, you have a nurses as well, because it is Nurse Appreciation Week, too. But everyone's just doing an amazing job, parents, you know, pulling through this. And just like I said last meeting, we're all in this together. Every district is going through this. So I know it's stressful, you know, at the same time, but we'll, we'll get through this together.
Thank you. It's like a bad horror movie.
Let me try to do this, and I'll look to Mrs. Dudek or one of the staff members. If you can't hear me, I'll talk louder. So how's that sound right now? Is that good? I get a thumbs up, okay, from Teresa, who's sitting relatively close to. Okay, so I have a couple of things. The first two are dealing with the governor's executive orders. And given the speed of which things happened on Friday and the lateness of what they happened on Friday with regard to the school budget vote, I'd like to go over a few of those issues just so we can understand. Okay, on May 19th, we would have had the regularly scheduled school budget, district vote, the school board election, and any other proposition that the board approved. And there will be some this evening that we have been working on for the past few months. The Governor's Executive Order 202.26 effectively postponed the May 19th budget vote to June 9th. The governor also banned in-person voting. So all of the votes and the budget propositions in all states are New York State. We moved to June 9th via absentee ballot. What that means for us is there are, there are a series of successive actions that will be pushed forward, the first of which, the annual budget hearing, which would have been tonight, adjourned through the June 2nd, 4:00 a.m., 5:30 p.m. At the regularly scheduled board meeting, we'll have a separate notice, and we will begin the June 2nd war meeting with a hearing on the budget officially. And that is standard of what we do. The date is June 2nd. All qualified voters will receive the mail, a ballot, absentee ballot for the school budget vote, board of education vacancy, and other propositions that the board may authorize. And then we will authorize the propositions this evening. Sorry, okay, okay, all right. Absentee ballots will be mailed as soon as early next week. And there are a few procedural things that have to occur, one of which is Saturday and another Monday. The school district clerk by noon will certify and acknowledge any eligible candidate who files a nomination petition. Excluding the requirements outlined in the governor's order for signatures. But all other requirements remain the same. Those must be received by the district clerk on June 11th. Absentee ballots will include a self-addressed stamped envelope. And returned to the district by the voter. And those ballots must be returned no later than 5:00 p.m. on June 9th. Any ballot returned after 5:00 p.m. on June 9th will be disqualified per election law and requirements. The absentee ballot will be mailed beginning next week, once we cross those thresholds, again on May 9th and May 11th, where stipulations step forth. The Governor's Executive Order. For those who are interested, a qualified voter is voted by the United States. And hold that for one second because on territory, we have second obligation and option for individuals from rural town. A qualified voter is United States citizen, 18 years of age on June 9th or earlier, a district resident for 30 days prior to the election, and their current address must be filed correctly with the Catteraugus County Board of Elections in Little Valley, or be documented on the Seneca Nation Tribal Roll or properly registered through the district's personal registration. Personal registration with the district will be held on May 18th, 2020. If you have any questions on personal registration, you can contact the district clerk at 945-2400, extension 4025, at the district office at Janet's office.
Yeah, I'm getting reports that it's small stat.
Okay, let's, Rob, is that microphone still on? Okay, what about the? What about the projection screen? That doesn't look like it's muted. All right, hold tight, everyone, trying to work on the echo.
It was bad, but it was good.
Yeah. Okay.
How is it now, everybody? Speaking to Eric?
Can you hear me now? Hold tight, everyone.
Can I get to it from this link or what?
Yeah.
You're with us, everyone.
The moment of silence has been brought to you by the library. We're actually in the library.
Let's find the right, how is that? Is that any better, ladies and gentlemen?
Yep.
All right, terrific. Let's move this over just a little bit so that you don't hear me breathing, and hopefully you'll be able to hear the important people.
Okay, let's try that regarding the budget again. Can I get a thumbs up if you can hear me?
Karen, Karen has given a thumbs up. So we'll, we'll, we'll start again with the budget changes from the governor. Thank you, Teresa. The school budget election previously scheduled for May 19th by Executive Order 202, I'm sorry, 202.26, has been adjourned until June 9th, 2020. The budget hearing, which normally would have been this evening, is scheduled for June 2nd at 5:30 p.m. during the regularly scheduled board meeting. On June 9th, eligible, eligible voters will receive a ballot in the mail, which will be mailed sometime early next week after we cross two thresholds required by the Governor's Executive Order on May 9th and May 11th. Qualified voters are individuals who are United States citizens, 18 years of age on the day of the election, June 9th, a district resident for 30 days immediately preceding the election, and their current address is on file and correctly filed with either the Catteraugus County Board of Elections in Little Valley or documented on the Seneca Nation Tribal Rolls or registered via district personal registration. District personal registration will be held on May 18th, 2020 in the district clerk's office at 50 Urquois Drive, Salamanca. If you have any questions about personal registration, you can contact Janet Cook, the district clerk, at 945-2400, extension 4025. It's important to note that individuals receiving ballots who are properly identified as a qualified voter must return the ballot to the district by 5:00 p.m. on June 9th. Any ballot received by the district after 5:00 p.m. on June 9th will be disqualified. I should also note that individuals who are identified as Native Americans and indigenous persons who are properly registered and residing on the Allegheny Reservation in the Steenburg or Cold Spring Heart, Cold Spring area for a period 30 days preceding the election may also be deemed as an eligible voter in this election. Again, if you have any questions, you can contact the district clerk at 945-2400, extension 4025. I'll stop here if there are any questions from the board members regarding the election for June 9th. And Sue, you mentioned you had a question.
The Board of Elections previously has helped Jen through school board election, you know, doing the ballots and all that. The board cannot do, the Board of Elections cannot do that this election. They are too busy with their own primary that has been canceled and then rescheduled. So they would like you to contact Phoenix Graphics.
We, we've done that.
They will do everything. They'll mail them, they'll, they'll do the works. And is that what Kevin wanted me to tell you about?
Um, yeah, Kevin and Courtney both have, am I allowed to talk?
Please.
Okay, so Kevin and Courtney have both contacted. I've been in charge after the talk into Phoenix Graphics. They sent me the quote. I, Bob and I are going to talk about it tomorrow. I know, I know just offhand, it's going to be approximately $30,000 plus postage. But I'm not, we, we already have, okay, so Phoenix, Phoenix Graphics can print the ballot. We still have to manually record it because Little Valley, about 3:30 today, Little Valley told me they don't have a machine. They don't have the employee staff to program a machine. Our hopes were, my hopes were, to let Phoenix Graphic do it. When the ballot comes through, I will stand there for 12 hours if I have to feed the machine as opposed to one yes, two yes, three yes, one no, two yes. So I don't, I don't think we can use Phoenix Graphics.
Who's going to do your ballots?
We're, I think we're going to have to. We've got 8,000 envelopes already ordered, like we normally send out to absentee.
God bless you, hon.
Yeah.
Believe me, I said, I don't want to do it neither. And if the school is willing to do the 30,000 plus whatever, maybe it's best for them to do it. But our, our envelopes are already ordered. And labels, I know we need 14,000 labels because you need 7,000 to go out and 7,000 to come back. It's going to be a nightmare.
Well, you need two, you need two with their addresses.
Right.
Plus the envelope with the school's address on.
Correct.
Yes.
So you need three.
Yes, we have three. Yes, we have three, three.
Yeah, yeah.
This is.
Tomorrow, after I talk to Bob, there might be a possibility we can do it, but.
Well, I just know that Kevin wanted me to recommend.
There's another company out of Toronto that Kevin recommended. They're willing to give us a quote, but again, I gotta, I gotta sit down with Bob. But it's, it's, it's going to be a nightmare that they told us to do within three, four days, but it is what it is.
That's what they're doing up there at the board, I guess.
Yeah.
Like I said to everybody on June 10th, I'm, I'm going to fall asleep and not worry about what happened June 9th. But between now, I'll probably not sleep, and that's okay.
Yeah, we're just, uh, just to summarize, we are struggling like every school district in New York State. With regard to the executive order to distribute to every possible eligible voter. By absentee ballot and just the sheer volume of envelopes. And the person power and the postage, this is going to be exorbitant for every school district. And we were hopeful today that there would be some movement and some clarification from the governor's office. And that may come once they realize that turning around an absentee ballot in less than a week is an insurmountable task. So we're proceeding as if we are going to mail things out at the deadline from the governor. Which is next week, once we set the ballot, based on that other date that comes on May 11th. And, and May 9th respectively on those two dates. And we have our support staff and we will have hands on deck. We will practice social distancing, stuffing envelopes. We will oversee it. We will do the very best we can to make sure that all ballots are mailed out at the deadline that's required. And then when the ballots come back in, we will follow our normal process of securing them. How we determine to count them, budding up against the state primary season. Is something we are going to have to either work out collaboratively with the county. Or work on independent measure internally to verify the votes. All of the ballots will be secured in a undisclosed bunker as we normally do. And under the oversight of the district clerk, we're in good hands with Janet. She's very knowledgeable on this. And we will get through it, but I'm not entirely certain if I could tell you step by step today. We will partner with CA Bosse's who has offered to help us print things as best they can for the region. But there are other districts that are doing the exact same thing, Pioneer and Oland, which are much larger than Salamanca. That are up against the same deadlines. So stay tuned, we will get it to you. If we get to the point where we do have an opportunity. For assistance from an outside vendor and that seems like it's expedient and compliant with the regulations. If that's a point and a bridge we have to cross, I know where to get you all and we'll get a thumbs up and, um, uh, and make sure that we can comply with everything.
The county board is going under, they don't know what the heck's going on, every day it changes. So, um, they won't be able to help us.
Yes.
Like they normally have.
They've always, they've always been excellent. And if they could, if, if we could have just got one machine, it would have solved everything because we couldn't have Phoenix Graphic do it. And we could have taken turns feeding the ballots through and it would have been.
Or Phoenix could do that for you if they printed your.
They could tally, tally for us?
Well, they would have that on the machine.
So they could tally, tally our ballots?
It'd be right on the machine.
So they give you a machine too? As I was just saying to.
You can get a machine over at, uh, in Chautauqua County. The old ABM.
We'll, we'll, we'll follow up with that tomorrow with Phoenix and.
Yeah, ABM over in Chautauqua County, that's where we get our machines. Or NTS up in Niagara Falls. But either way, I can, NTS I know better in Niagara Falls.
Okay, thanks Sue, that, that's helpful.
Are there any other questions about the voting?
Okay, I, just two more quick things. Just for the community's benefit and the board members' understanding. We are still awaiting further guidance from the governor's office and the state education department. About when the 2019, 2020 school year will conclude. We know that the year will conclude at some point in time. It was previously June 25th with graduation on the 26th. We know that summer regents exams have been canceled, but we do not know when the year will end. If we will have summer school, what summer school options might include. Uh, and the scope and size and social distancing. Those determinations, according to the governor's most recent directives, will come out by the end of May. And that will require us to quickly turn around any decisions for summer programming. So it will be a very. Hectic and frenzied May and early June with that decision coming and then rolling in the following week. Uh, or nine days later for the election for, for the budget and the. Other propositions on there. And then lastly, we've touched on this, I won't belabor it too much, but I do want to say. That in recognition of Staff Appreciation Week, I hope that the community takes a moment and goes on our Facebook page. And provides some words of encouragement for all of our staff. And I, I, we couldn't be doing what we're doing without our teachers. Our counselors, our social workers, our teacher assistants, our nurses, our administrators, our clerical, our food service, transportation, buildings and grounds, therapists. Psychologists, all of our office staff, maintenance, everyone and anyone serves a role. And I've said this before, if you don't think our transportation department is integral in our instructional plan. And that they are not driving instruction, they literally are driving instruction to kids. Before they were driving kids to us, but now they are the vehicle, no pun intended, or pun intended. That are helping us get materials to our students. Our food service workers are absolutely essential to us helping keep our kids in our community well fed. Our staff is regularly contacting our students. And when I was delivering signs all over Western New York today. And we tracked down one staff member who was with their parent nearly in Lockport. For safety reasons or security reasons or health reasons. Our staff was doing Zoom lessons and teaching kids today. And I don't know what warned my heart more, seeing the pictures of the staff with our superhero signs. Or knowing that they were still conducting their business. Just like it's a regular school day in this crazy, crazy COVID world. And hats off to them. And if our community could please go online, leave some words of encouragement, some thumbs up, some great emojis and positive praise for our staff, one and all. I, I think we'll keep this going with goodwill and positive thoughts. And I'll just end by saying soon we will be together. And soon we will be celebrating our return to our normal Salamanca Warrior ways. Thank you.
Thanks Bob. Okay, we need to move on to the consent agenda, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Sue, second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
I opposed, abstained, thumbs up, motion carried. And our personal consent agenda, so we need a, we have a lot of different tenure and everything that's listed. So we need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda. Motion by Brad. Second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
I opposed, abstained, Meg did give a thumbs up, motion carried. Do we have anybody we need to introduce, Bob?
We have several people we would like to introduce. And I will start, and if the principals are on board and they want to unmute and join in the conversation, please let us know. But I'd like to start with the tenure recommendation of Justin Hubbard, tenure area of social studies. Justin has been with us for what seems like an eternity as a substitute and then a long-term sub. And then now completing his tenure process at the high school in social studies. Justin is infectious and contagious in his enthusiasm. And he is Mr. Pep Assembly, but also so amazingly connected with our students. That it's hard to put in words over a Zoom meeting. But to see him at a pep assembly or spirit week or traveling to away championship contests. Or working with students in the hallway or in the classroom before school, after school, during school. Justin is an exemplary model of an engaged teacher working with our Salamanca students. And I want to personally commend Justin for working with the department and putting forward a proposal to provide supports to our students next year. In the area particularly of Global 9 and Global 10, which will see some significant curriculum changes and state assessment changes. And Justin will, always is the consummate team player. And will be transitioning to a global social studies and high school social studies intervention teacher to provide additional supports to our staff and students. And I would like to commend and wholeheartedly recommend Justin Hubbard for tenure in social studies. There you go.
And when you stated that he's infectious and contagious, that's his personality, not his current.
Not his current medical diagnosis, that's correct.
Great job, Justin.
Um, I'm going to start with our second tenure candidate in science, but I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Beeler, who's worked very closely with Mr. Drenzio. And when Nick came to us at an upper science level. He immediately jumped in and started teaching upper level physics classes for us. And as those know, our history of attracting students into physics has been somewhat inconsistent. But under Nick's leadership, our physics numbers have consistently grown. And most recently, we had 26 students in physics. And I would say that's a direct result of Nick, his ability to connect with students. And his deep, deep knowledge of upper level science. He has been an integral part of our growing drone and technology program. As science and technology seamlessly fuses together in our new state of the art STEAM and award-winning STEAM program. Um, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Beeler for a few comments about Mr. Drenzio.
Well, you already covered quite a few, but I just want to acknowledge the fact that Nick came to us primarily as a chemistry teacher. Then he added on of his own little physics. Because he saw that we had the need for a physics teacher and then we had students interested in physics. But then his first year, he had a partnership with the University of Buffalo. We had a physics club after school. We went on field trips, it was terrific. He also has involved himself greatly, as you said, with the FAA drone program. And is one of our primary instructors. He provides a significant amount of guidance to our STEAM program. And all around, you know, when you hire a teacher in a district like ours. It, it really shows the type of person and the type of teacher that a person will become when they start to expand and add on other courses, other programs. And their class numbers start to grow. Because if the kids aren't relating to the teacher, the program will die. And in this particular case, Nick has grown every program that he has been a part of. And that really speaks not only to his teachering ability, but to him as a person. So we welcome him and he is well deserved of tenure.
Teachering?
I may have.
You may have.
Okay, I think my mask is plugged because it's harder and harder to breathe the more I talk.
It's a pandemic, we're allowed to make words up.
My hot ear is coming back yet.
Welcome to our world. Our last tenure candidate, and this is wonderful, Mr. Chris Seabert. As our high school principal is earning tenure this evening. Chris has been part of the Salamanca Warrior family for what seems like decades. And I think that that's not an understatement. First, as a science teacher. Second, as an assistant principal and athletic director. And for the past few years as our building principal. When we interviewed Chris for the building principal position just a few years ago. The candidates who were finalists were tasked well before the technology was where it's at today. To create a digital message and a digital plan. Talking about their transition into the principalship and what we can expect from that candidate. All of the candidates did a really nice job. Chris crushed them and blew them out of the water. Not only with his deep and intimate knowledge of Salamanca and what it means to be a warrior. But the passion, the love and the commitment to our district is unparalleled then and continues to be unparalleled today. When Chris signed off his video, other candidates gave a general generic greeting. Thank you, it's been my honor. Chris did what we would expect a warrior to do. He signed off his video with just the simple words, "I am a warrior." And I think it's safe to say that I think the patent and the copyright on that phrase is pending. And we now all are talking about being warriors. I think that's a direct reflection on Chris's leadership. And while he has had the helm of the high school. The behavioral concerns, the academic progress, the community engagement, the staff participation levels. Are absolutely in the right, right direction and the trajectory is unbelievable. That's leadership. And if Chris can sign out his video transition plan, "I am a warrior," I would also add, he is a leader. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Beeler if there's anything else you would like to add.
Honestly, you know, the numbers and the staff speak for Chris. His graduation rate numbers have gone through the roof. His discipline numbers have dropped. His staff numbers have gone up. Recruitment and retention at the high school is no longer an issue. Um, I believe we see a higher level of morale and interest than we have previously, to say the very least. Um, and quite frankly, I'm absolutely proud to say that I, I know Chris and that I work with Chris. Um, and that he's part of the Salamanca family.
Awesome, congratulations.
And I think that's it for the introductions.
Okay. Okay.
I don't think so.
Then we will go to new business, item A. We are abolishing and creating some positions. We need to, I need a motion to approve the abolishment and the creation of the positions listed above on the agenda. Motion by Barb.
Second.
Second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained, Meg gave the thumbs up, motion carried. And our surplus items that are listed, so we need a motion to declare the item surplus. Who did that? Okay, motion by Dale, second by Brad, are there any questions?
Yes, just to comment, there has been at least one overture on some of this equipment. With the board surplusing of it this evening, we will invite those individuals in to take a look at it. So that they can actually inspect it to see if it's something that they may be interested in. And then we'll take that process to the next step. Uh, and I'm not quite sure entirely what that is, but we'll get them in to have a conversation and have them take a look at it first before we scrap it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Dale, second by Brad, all in favor?
I.
Thumbs up from Meg, opposed, abstained, motion carried. And our stipend for the additional capital project work. So we need a motion to approve the stipend for the Director of Facilities 2.
Motion.
Motion by Kerry. Second by Sue, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Thumbs up from Meg, opposed, abstained, motion carried. And our consultant agreement with Dr. Taylor, need a motion to approve that consultant agreement? Motion. Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Kerry's got a question.
Bob, can you give us a summary of what's going on with this?
With that, it's, I will turn that over to Dr. Beeler who's been involved with the grass. Yes.
Yes. This is a portion of the My Brothers Keeper Grant. Dr. Taylor has agreed to work with our staff and take on one of the primary roles of curriculum development as well as resource development. The funding comes exclusively from the My Brothers Keeper Native American Program Grant, which has been approved. Actually, we approved it or you approved it as a school board and was also run through the Title VI Parent Advisory Committee. So this is sort of the first phase of getting that program put in place.
And what is the goal?
The goal is to have a comprehensive K through 12 curriculum for our students here in Salamaka as well as a resource or become a resource center for all of New York State so that when teachers in other districts across New York State have questions about appropriateness, authenticity, or quite frankly, how to teach a particular topic related to Native American history, we will become the resource for that, for those teachers and become the experts here in Salamaka.
And when do we expect completion?
This is a three-year project. It's pretty comprehensive. He has already begun. There was a tentative approval from New York State for the grant, but the final approval did not come until about a few weeks ago. That's why we had him get started immediately because we know he would be approved, but we didn't get it before the board, frankly, until we had the final approval from state education, the final documents. One of the pieces that is kind of tricky is while we can say what is appropriate to teach and how it should be taught, a lot of the resources simply aren't available or aren't appropriate or simply aren't correct. So one of the components is once we've identified what it is that we're going to teach, Dr. Taylor will also be helping us to create some of the resources that actually can be then distributed throughout New York State and then potentially even throughout the country for Native American history.
Mark.
Awesome.
Yeah, Mark, I had a grant.
Can't hear you, Meg.
You can't hear. I'm muted. Can you hear now?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I had a grant through J C C that did something similar, but there was an administration change within the nation. So it just kind of stalled. So if you can pass on some info to, you know, to the group that's doing this. I know Michael from Wells College, but I do have some materials and some things. And I'd worked with Seneca Media and Communications on getting some film clips and stuff done too. So he can have all of that. That's already been done.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Meg. Are there any other questions or comments? Then we have a motion by Dale, second by Brad. All in favor?
I.
Thumbs up from Meg. Opposed, abstained, motion carried. And we need a motion to approve the special education extended year, school year.
Motion.
Motion by Barb.
Second.
Second by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained. Meg gave a thumbs up. Motion carried. And our S S S O contract. So we need a motion to approve the contract.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Dale, second by Kerry. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained, motion. Meg gave a thumbs up. Motion carried. And item G is our budget hearing, adjournment and related. Do we have to read it or?
I think it probably would not, at least the recommended action, if you want, I can do that or if you want to do it.
Be it.
Be resolved. Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education adjourns the annual budget hearing from May 5th, 2020 to June 2nd, 2020. And whereas personal registration of voters is required pursuant to the recommendations of section 2007, 2014 of New York State education law. Now be it resolved that the registration date for the school district budget vote and Board of Education election is hereby established as May 18th, 2020 between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. in the district clerk's office. A register containing names of registered voters will be available upon request to taxpayers and qualified voters within the district by appointment between the hours of 9:00 a.m. prevailing time and 3:00 p.m. prevailing time from May 18th, 2020 to June 9th, 2020. Exclusives, exclusive of Saturdays and Sundays and holidays at the office of the district clerk located in the district office, 50 Iroquois Drive, Salma, in New York, 14779. And now be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, nominating petitions are available for one board of election seat currently held by board member Kerry John, which is a five-year term effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2025. And nominating petitions must be received by the district clerk by noon on May 11th, 2020 per the governor's executive order 20.26. And be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the requisition for property acquisitions, property leases be approved. Anything else, Bob?
I think that's it.
Okay. So we need a motion for the budget hearing and nominating petitions. Motion by Brad. Second by Sue. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
There's only one candidate then running so far.
Unless what? More?
I mean, it says now that they've extended the dates.
Right.
Apparently, you know, and Kerry already filed his, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Yes.
And no one else filed at that time?
Not currently, no.
Okay. So I mean, most people that was interested in it, I would have thought they would have done it by now.
You would think.
You would think. Okay. That's what I just wanted to clarify is that.
Okay.
You are the only one.
And I'm interested.
I told everyone to support you. You know everything about construction and it's helped me a lot.
Ditto.
Yes, he is our expert on construction.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Tell everybody.
Yes.
Someday I'll be an expert on education.
I'll meet you there. I'm still waiting. I'm still learning.
So we have a motion by Brad, second by Sue. All in favor?
I.
Thumbs up from Meg. Opposed, abstained, motion carried. And then our, let's see. I'm not losing myself in this motion here.
So Janet, the next.
I. So the next one then is.
Each.
Oh, okay. So the next is the seeker. Do we have to read that one too?
No.
No. So then we need a motion for the resolution for negative declaration for 70 Fern Avenue and a portion of 413 Front. Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Kerry. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Thumbs up from Meg. Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Okay. And then item I is.
The resolution for property acquisition.
Okay, so that's the.
The necessity.
Yes.
Resolution.
This makes it permissible to go on the ballot.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the property going on the ballot.
Motion.
Motion by Kerry, second by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Thumbs up from Meg. Opposed, abstained, motion carried. All right. So that's I, the fourth thing, Ivan J. Item J is the acquisition.
The cost.
The cost. Okay. Is the cost of the property. So we need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained, thumbs up from Meg, motion carried. And that's it. That's it. All right. Item eight is just our board information and reports. And now we need a motion to go into executive session, region. Okay. Motion by Barb.
Second.
Second by Kerry. All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained, thumbs up from Meg, motion carried.
That's for the purpose of contract.
Yes, contract negotiations. Thank you.
Am I reconnecting to the same one? Does anyone know?